Call, so you ready? We'll call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Here.
Gary. McMullen. Reed.
Here.
Mayor Beatty.
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I don't have any.
Okay. Um, public comment, if anyone has comment for council, please come up to the podium, you have three minutes.
This would be your time if you had the comments.
Good evening, for the record, my name is David Shaw, S C H A A B, municipal marketing manager for Waste Management, W M. And I'm just here interested in the, uh, the agenda item of the discussion of possible extension. We have a long history of service here, we're anxious to see if we can extend that. And we look forward to the opportunity to adjust that and answer any questions we have. If you feel like you've got any questions, I want to sit down.
Thank you. We may call on you.
That's right.
Uh, with no other public comment, we'll go to new business. Item one, Resolution twenty twenty five oh two, awarding a construction contract to Universal Asphalt and Excavating Inc., LaSalle, Illinois, for the twenty twenty five general revenue project, which includes roadwork on North Illinois Street, East Morrell Street, and the city of Streeter Counties of LaSalle and Livingston. You get a motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Reed with the motion, Connor with the second. And discussion.
Uh, so yeah, so, uh, part of our heart here, our plan is, uh, Illinois Street, uh, from Main Street up around to Morrell, and we do the piece of Morrell over to Chappell Hall. So, uh, generally, we had seven bids, had a really good response to the bid opening. Uh, Universal Asphalt has done work during the past, they actually got last year's general revenue job. Uh, they were under the estimate, so recommend award.
Hundred forty thousand, hundred?
Yeah, so it was very, very, very good, I'd say that, and I think that, the, the, the seven bidders, I think, shows, and we've got another bid here, two more minutes in a month, I'm hoping we see the same result, so.
Alright.
And everybody's looking for some work, so.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Is there, is just roadways not curb and gutter?
It is curb and gutter, so yeah, curb and gutter, uh, all the way around, so it'll be curb on the, right now, there's some on the east side that'll be, we're kind of, we're just, couple of good sections, we're living in, by the depot, we're living in, and then, but the west side, it could all be curb, all the way around.
Okay, and then parking, will be, will there be room for parking?
Oh yeah, so yeah, it's the same width as it already, we're not, we're not.
Well, there won't be curb on the, on the east side, you get from Broadway up to the corner.
Yeah, so, but it's all, you've got diversified and, and, yes, I sort of really know, there's already parking that got paid as part of the category, further up there, so.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye. Item two, Resolution twenty twenty five oh three, accepting the dedication of right-of-way from Streeter Area Chamber of Commerce Industrial Development Corporation to be included with Meyer Sherman right-of-way, you get a motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Connor with the motion, Reed with the second. And we'll go into discussion.
So, uh, these next two, actually, two and three, all kind of are building the same thing as what, uh, Meyer Sherman Road was built. Uh, it's part of a platinum subdivision owned, at the time, it was owned by Streeter, uh, Industrial Development Corp. Uh, there's one lot that the road was built on, that the Livingston County never included as the road right-of-way, they're asking for this, so, uh, Jack DeZuris, as the, you know, was the, uh, speaker for that, for that group, uh, filed a petition to dedicate that as right-of-way, so they don't have to pay taxes on it anymore. And then the city, uh, number three, when we were building that, bought sixteen oh one South Illinois, actually, at the time, Victor purchased it, gave it to the city, and it's the road, and it also was never included as right-of-way. So there's two lots there that just came to the insortment of the road, and so that's what those next two do.
Alright, the one is, that seventy seven oh nine, that's on the, is this, is this north and this is south?
Yes, yes.
That's right. So what we're, what we're doing is taking in that piece of property, just south of the road going back?
Yes.
And what's the other one we're doing?
And, and the other one is the blue, it's right, it is the road.
It is the road.
It literally is the road, and that is, yeah.
Yeah, it's already the road, it just needs to be made right.
It may have been right-of-way, so the chamber doesn't have to pay a couple of bucks.
I'm having a hard time trying to figure out where they had it taken.
Yeah, I, I think it was an issue with Livingston County, but they have asked us to do this, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, um, any other questions or comment? Clerk, call the roll.
Connor.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye. Item three, Resolution twenty twenty five oh four, accepting the dedication of property commonly known as sixteen oh one South Illinois Street to be included with the Meyer Sherman right, Meyer Sherman Way right-of-way. You get a motion and second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dave Reed with the motion, Dave Connor with the second. Any comments or questions? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye. Item four, we'll go into discussion items.
The city currently has a contract with, uh, Waste Management, going back seven years, two thousand and eighteen, I believe. Uh, prior to two thousand and nineteen, I think, this, what are we, in the twenty, twenty-fifth year, something like that, of service?
Call them on Thursday, when you're sure.
Uh, so there's a, you know, multi-decade history, uh, that Waste Management has served the community of Streeter. And from time to time, the contract, uh, needs to be updated. Uh, there's really two approaches that the city can take, an update of, uh, services contract, whether it's a request proposals, so, competing firms, and there's a handful of firms serving Northern Illinois, could offer, you know, bids to, to service Streeter, and the other is just renegotiating with the current provider. There's pros and cons for both of it, for both of those approaches. Uh, on the pro side, we have an established relationship, they do a phenomenal job, uh, go beyond really the four corners of the contract in terms of serving the community. Uh, there've been instances of missed pickups where they would go back and pick it up, even though in factually, they weren't, um, obligated to do that. And so they've served the community well over time. Uh, prices, obviously, have grown every year, they're losing us, you know, cost of living adjustment every year. Uh, during the, uh, past contract, though, there'd been a couple of instances where the company has come forward and asked for adjustments in pricing because they encountered, at least from their perspective, unexpected expenses, particularly with recyclable materials and diesel fuel pricing. So, uh, we're expecting to, uh, see a fairly steep increase in, in services regardless of the approach we take, uh, because those costs have, have grown over time, and there's been general inflation over the past couple of years. Uh, the, if I were to, uh, negotiate with Waste Management, I would, uh, survey all of the surrounding communities, try to get a sense of what other communities are paying, what types of services that they're paying for, and, uh, negotiate a contract around what is really the market for, for the services provided, because pretty much most communities are doing it. You have some outliers, Ottawa, for example, I think that doesn't have an exclusion, exclusionary contract with one provider, they allow the residents to kind of, with multiple firms. Um, it takes a lot of hassle, and with the city, not being directly responsible, but I think in a community like Streeter where we had all sorts of code enforcement issues, I would not recommend doing that. I think one of the benefits of our current contract, although it is costly, is the, the one bulk item a week that a resident can put out. So when there have been instances where, um, you know, a property is trashed, they can have a, really a no-cost way of, of dealing with some of that. They also have a contract for household hazards, materials, electronic waste, and Waste Management has a really state-of-the-art program to deal with that, where they'll pick up the waste from the front doors of the properties or the garages, so they'll go, uh, property by property when, when calls come in. So, if we choose to, if, if you direct me to go up for proposals, I pretty much prepared one, a request for proposal that I could release early next week. Um, if, if you think we just want to stay with Waste Management and do the, the shopping around, and, and I come back to you in the next couple of weeks with that arrangement, um, uh, I, you know, probably get this resolved a little sooner. The contract, uh, expires at the end of April, so we have to make a decision probably by early to mid Mar, by mid-March. So my recommendation, my preference is to just negotiate with Waste Management. The downside of that is, it's not a formal RFP and it's, and that, but, uh, I would, uh, I'm anticipating that you're gonna ask me to go off for proposals, and so that's why I've done that one.
Well, as, as a consumer, uh, I'm very happy with Waste Management. I, I think they provide a good service, they provide, uh, extra services like the one large item and, and the electronic pickup, you can call it Vance. Uh, as a councilman, I think we need to do due diligence and look around and see what the other costs are. So, I don't know what that tells you, but.
No, well, I, I will say that the RFP that I, uh, largely completed would provide, um, I would be shopping the same services that we're currently buying. I wouldn't necessarily, uh, enhance them in any ways, because I don't think we want to pay for the costs.
Right.
But, uh, uh, I would try to match what, what we currently, what we currently provide.
We went through this in, I think it was twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen?
Yeah.
We did an RFP at that point, and stayed with Waste Management.
I actually haven't been able to find, I don't think I have that RFP, but I went ahead and prepared another one, except I looked at a couple of other communities that just didn't want the other.
Do other companies provide those services, the one large item?
They'll do whatever you want to pay for. Okay, uh, I talked to one, one of their competitors, and, uh, because one of the concerns I had was, uh, the ability to, the carts are owned by Waste Management, and, uh, every resident has at least two carts, one for recyclable bowls, one for regular garbage. And, uh, so, there'd be a fairly large effort to distribute carts.
Can you check with other communities, I don't know how far around or whatever, that maybe have gone through this in the last year, to see how their bids were, whatever, how their?
Well, that's what I would do, if we were to just negotiate with one, I'd give current pricing.
You know, like, let's say, Pontiac just went through this, and went with Waste Management, they had, but they bid it out and they had other bids, is there any way they could, you know, converse with something like that to see, you know, just what, how it was, and if it's head, bids weren't close, then there's no sense, to me, in doing it and just renegotiating.
Well, uh, you got, the, the market, you got Lake Shore, uh, that's growing out of the suburbs, they took over LaSalle, what, a couple of years ago? Um, I bet, uh, Waste Management and then Republic, those are the big players in this region, and smaller players like Michael Tospalso. Uh, there's another big company, um, operating in Northern Illinois, Waste Connections. They recently purchased Brute, which is a big company in the Chicago area, I don't really see them around here. One of the interesting things about the business is, uh, you have the collection side, and you have the landfill side, and the recycling side, but these big companies, because they operate nationwide, have worked out arrangements so that they, um, if Waste Management got the contract, they do, the waste would likely go into a Republic landfill, the closest one to keep, you know, uh, time, um, gravel time down and so on, but they are responsible for making those arrangements, not us. So Republic got the contract, uh, they probably utilize their own, um, landfills, uh, who knows? Lake Shore, I think, is all the way toward the Quads cities. And, and, and just, I think there's, there's a lot there, somewhere towards Jelcie.
I think, I don't know, LaSalle changed two years, yeah, January twenty twenty-three. I want to say Princeton's recently gone through, I don't think who else.
I would, I would contact all the Illinois Valley cities, uh, with some rural population, five thousand over. Check the population.
And then how often do we raise our fees?
Unfortunately, not enough, uh, and so we're gonna need to do that regardless, see if we're gonna.
If, if the fees are going up, I don't see why to be absorbable and don't pass them on.
We're gonna have to pass them on, because we're already operating at a loss.
Right, and I know, it's where it's been done forty, fifty years, they wait until, until they lose the money, and then they say, oh, we need to raise our fees, because they don't want to make everybody mad by raising, you know, seventy-five cents a dollar, they wait until it's four dollars to raise, and then you catch a lot of help. I'd rather see a small increase every year, so we don't lose money.
We've done that now on utility.
On the sewer side, yeah.
And maybe the next time we adopt the ordinance, we should put a, a lot of manifesta in place, at least to reflect what, if we have a multi-year contract. Uh, what would you, be your preference in contract term? Uh, we're coming off a seven-year contract, would you want to match seven years, or would you think five years would be appropriate? How often do you think, uh, you need to come back?
I think so.
Yeah, I think seven's fine, yeah.
Yeah, the downside of a long contract, it's difficult for the companies to predict, it's difficult for anybody to predict what the cost structure is gonna be.
Right.
Uh, they may have a sense of the first year or two, and so, uh, you know, you run into the risk of the company coming back, and then where are you?
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with renegotiating later on in the contract, if they feel.
Well, we weren't willing to do that.
Yeah.
It's not something, when the company requested it twice.
It's not something you want to do.
Well, because when you renegotiate it, particularly in a significant way, then, and you just kind of came off of a bid, is it really fair to the other little bidders that, you know, two years after the con, or whatever, some period, short period of time after, we selected them because they were presumably the little bid. Now, this is not like a street project, you would have some flexibility to even pick a higher, you're not legally, I don't think you're legally obligated to pick, to select a little bidder. So if there's a subjective concern that you might have, uh, because a community didn't perform, or a company didn't, didn't perform well in another community, that, you know, you, you don't want to take that risk, you may be free to approve, depending on how, I think, close the pricing would be. So, I, it's consensus just going out for proposal, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Do our, our, do you negotiate?
Then?
What do you want to do?
I'd, I'd like to see other proposals.
Yeah, I'd like to, like, see what other companies are charging, or, or get feedback from other communities that have gone through this, because if other communities have gone through this, and it's, and our Waste Management's cheaper, then there's no sense going through that whole process, we can just.
Well, one of the downsides is I'm gonna run a calendar thing, if I'm gonna go off for proposals. I gotta give the companies enough time. The, the, the way, if we're gonna go off for proposals, I, I'll send them out via email to the major players, um, post it on our website, you know, do a public announcement. And then I'll schedule a meeting in February here with the company, so we'll have a pre-submission meeting, answering any questions that anyone might have, and then sometime in March, which is a fairly short turnaround, over, over a million-dollar-plus contract, they actually submit the proposal so that we can get it approved here in March, give the company time to acquire all the, if it's not Waste Management, to give them time to acquire all the bins and to get organized and schedule their equipment and so forth. It is, it's a big undertaking, if we're gonna make a change. That's one of the reasons why I prefer to negotiate with Waste Management, is, uh, the, uh, the like.
Switching on the feds is a big challenge.
If you don't switch over, we're not gonna run any risk of it blowing up in our faces. Because what we would most likely see, regardless of what we do, the prices are gonna go up, we're gonna be charging our customers more, and we run the risk of issues with a new company coming in and not serving the community in the way that they historically have been served, and possibly build, why we kind of work out those problems. So, RFP?
It's like, that's a consensus, we go RFP and let's start the day.
I think you got your.
I have my direction.
You have your direction, so we'll be in talk, uh, in touch. I have a, uh, depending on the weather, if you can get a little, I suppose, I can get the normal tomorrow, there's a winter conference for Illinois city managers near the university, the normal, at the Mary Apple Town, so I'm planning on being there tomorrow, because I won't get the sun tomorrow. So, probably Monday.
Okay, that's good. Right, item five, consent agenda. It's a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with fund warrant totals of three hundred eighty thousand eight thirty-five ninety-one. You have a motion and second.
So moved.
It's his turn.
I'm gonna look, but the company just got a new one of these, didn't they? Is that updated?
I didn't get, oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, did it, did it?
Okay.
I'm sorry about that. Second.
So Dave Reed, Dave Connor with the second. Uh, any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye. Item six, um, comments from city officials?
Well, I've got a couple of things, I know Dave has one. Um, first off, I'd like to say, in, in the newspaper tonight, page two, uh, Brian Park, who is the captain of the Streeter Fire Department, wrote a nice article, uh, about, about fire prevention and safety, and I would urge you, everybody, to read that. And the second thing I'd like to add is, on February fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth, uh, all the historical society and museums of LaSalle County are having a history by the dozen tour. For one dollar, you get a passport, and over those three days, you can visit all twelve museums in LaSalle County. I would urge you to start with the Streeterland Historical Society Museum, if you've never been there, you'll be impressed. Uh, but we are only going to be participating on the fifteenth and seventeenth. Some of them are only on the fifteenth and sixteenth, which is Friday and Saturday. We're taking Sunday off, but take advantage of that, okay? So, that's all I've got.
All right, I hand it to you guys, uh, talked about this before, but I'd like to see us do something with, uh, the first one is view of corners. When you get up to a corner, right now, it's, it says twenty feet from each intersection to property lines, I'd like to see us move it back to twenty-five to thirty feet. That way, when you put, I use street home building as an example, Bridge and Main, or Bridge and Morrell, when you pull up, you have to pull into the crosswalk to see what's coming down Bridge Street.
See around the sign.
Yeah, so if the sign was back another five feet or so, and that's, that's not the only place, but that would allow a clearer line of vision, to make, so we don't, you know, people have to pull into the crosswalk, the stuff is coming, and you don't pull too far, it could, it could, it could. And then the other one is about the tree ordinance, and I told Jim, I thought the one I seen before said, had a, had a specific line in it, said, unless you have permission from the public works director, but I don't see it in this one. But I'd just like to see it say that, and I, can you correct me if I'm wrong? No trees are pushed, if you find, I'll see the own property or right-of-ways, that's basically what this does, right now, it doesn't.
It says without permission, so that's, it doesn't say per work, so by permission, you can.
Okay, so I'd like, I would like to take permission out of there and just see nothing at all, by the owner. And that would be by non-city, you know, if the city wants to put trees in the parks, it can, because that's city property.
Thirty-sixth is the one.
Yeah. And then my other question is, still up there at Bloomington and Morrell, the trees on the west side between, from the alley to Morrell Street, are we gonna leave those up, or are we gonna take those down? Because actually, they're a violation of the ordinance that we have on spacing of trees that are planted. They're supposed to, they're under twenty-five feet, they're supposed to be twenty-five feet apart from center to center, and there's two small trees that are probably ten feet, and one of them blocks the, no parking sign. And then the two big trees, if they're over thirty-five feet, are supposed to be spaced forty to sixty feet apart from center to center. And there's five trees on that burn, and I personally still would like to see them all come down, pay the homeowner the cost of what the trees were, because it's easier for a car to see through there, but if you're in a school bus, and the bus was, the high school pickup on the north, or the north side of the high school, it'd come up that way. And any semis, or anybody else, garbage trucks, they have to pull way out to the edge of the road to see around the cor, to see things coming down, especially when the trees have leaves on them. I don't know how everybody else deals, I'd like the seals come out, still.
Yeah, they, they can block your vision. If, if you are going east on Morrell, when you come to that intersection, it's hard to see. And with the school right there and kids and.
And it's across, so it's especially hard at dismissal time, because you have students that walk down the sidewalk, and they're across there, and you've got people trying to leave, and the buses have to pull farther than that to see around the corner. And I'd say to see, the other, most accidents have been at the other block south, but there's been some here, and I just think, and for safety's sake, we should, we should get rid of them.
So the blocks going, are south from there, there's a couple, I mean, there's one, two, three, four, five, six. There's six other trees on the burn, in the next two blocks, going from there, um.
Going north?
No, heading south from Morrell.
South is the high school.
Keep going south. Past the high school, and then the next block, there's three trees on that block. Another one or two on the following block, on that side of the street. So there's multiple trees through there. I mean, the, my heartbroken with it was the owner, the property owner, did, got permission to put them on there. I know that one was removed and planted elsewhere. But if you have, you look through the block, there's, there's more of them right in that neighborhood. So is it just, you know, do we take everybody out, or just one?
Well, if we're gonna remove the trees, we should probably do it before it warms up, I would think. We'd have to find the sweet spot for taking care of them, you know, kill the trees off. You know, I think at a minimum, we could have to bring the person owner for the trees, and, uh, I know she was, I did talk to her, it's been one year or more now, and, uh, she was pretty upset about the situation, very upset. Uh, I would give her the opportunity to, and to suggest where they should be planted, as opposed to just cutting them down, if she has some emotional attachments to it. So, I don't want to just send a public works crew out to do it without.
We wouldn't do that.
With involving the owner and, uh, seeing what we can work out with her.
Fine, I'll need to drive by there and, and look at the trees to the south, like the mayor said, be, before I decide how aggressive we want to be with it.
Well, the traffic comes from the north, and I think that's where you're looking.
Right.
Probably, that's the issue. But you go up and down the street, you know, I'm gonna cut down every tree that's north of.
Yeah, that's, like I said, how aggressive do we want to be with that, because you're gonna come out of, of, well, Lincoln Avenue's one way, going that way. Because you're gonna come out of, of, well, Lincoln Avenue's one way going that way. So that's not an issue, but the next block down is Broadway. I don't know what kind of, you know, sightline obstruction there is there. So, like I said, I, I would have to go out and look at it to see if, if it's that big of an issue. But I, I do know north of Morel Street, there's just way too many trees on that berm, if you can see.
And you have the school traffic too. Uh, so it's a bit unusual to that, regarding. But there are communities that plant trees in, in the berm or Parkway that have a regular program to do it. Take a tree out, take your plant trees because they want that corridor kind of effect with the trees uh, growing and overhanging the, the street.
But that's the worst that you can do.
Well, but.
And I see it on the app because I think it looks nice. If I, if we check those trees out, I think it'd look terrible.
It does look nice, but it's all the city property. If they fall and damage something, the city's responsible. I showed Dave years ago when I drove a street sleeper, if you look where roads are deteriorated, most of them where there's, the trees are put shade over the road and they can't ever dry out in the winter or the, or the, after rainy season. David and Lingy, I saw him a week later and goes, you're right, you know, he went around, he was driving around town. It, it, it's drying.
Good example of that is Bazaar Street. You're driving east, you're in the, the, eastbound is on the south side of the street and it never gets sun. It's all shaded and that side of the street's all beat up compared to the other lane.
Just like LaSalle Street over here, it's really heavily shaded.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
But doesn't, you know, you said some, some communities actually plant and encourage that. Doesn't that affect, like, utility lines and things?
It's just what they do.
I know Skokie has it like that, this is the, your.
Because I always thought that was one of the reasons they didn't want trees there because the roots get into utility lines and things.
Well, I mean, yeah, a lot of the trees are fairly substantial, they're just not the ornamental thing.
Yeah. Well, LaSalle Street.
If you go back a hundred years, there were communities along the North Shore, River Forest where I used to work, um, were just chock full of bale trees. And if you had the full canopy effect, uh, during the seventies and eighties, those towns were cutting a hundred-plus trees a year, at least River Forest was. Uh, when the Dutch Alps disease came through, but the, but they were replanting them.
Yeah, and, and I think the problem on, on Bloomington Street, north of Morel, it's not that there's trees, there's just too many trees there. And it does block the, block the view if they were spaced out further.
Well, the two bigger ones hanging out farther in the street, they're, they're closer to the alley, so they have, they're full of leaves. It makes it worse in the, in the spring and summer.
Yeah, I don't, I don't drive that intersection that often anymore.
So what's the consensus? Do we have to have the owner and work out an arrangement to remove the trees?
I said, I'd like to, because if you enforce it on her, we're gonna have to enforce it everywhere. You can't pick and choose. So I'd like to go look and, what's that?
Why not?
You can't tell one homeowner, it's okay for you to do it, but we're gonna tear these trees down a block away. You, you have to be consistent if you're gonna enforce a rule. Either enforce it with everybody or nobody. So I'd like to go look at them before I see how aggressive we want to be on enforcing it. I mean, I, I agree, it's, it, that's a problem in that one intersection, but you can't.
I don't have the man part to go out, cut a tree down that's on a berm, and I, and I would never, I would never suggest that. We'll take them out as they go, and Jeff, that was part of Jeff's reason with buying the bigger boom truck, was to get in and do that stuff too, as, as they go.
But how do you tell one, you can have them, and another one, you can't? You can't have two such rules.
Well, the ordinance now says you can't find them there anymore. These are done after that ordinance, but it's split permission to the Public Works Director. In this case, to me, it's just all about safety. If there, if there's somewhere else, because there's, there's some others, around Water Street, there's four that are on the berm, that are just probably two feet high, three feet high. But safety, safety stakes, for safety's sake, because by high school is the only reason I'm pushing for this one. You know, I just don't want to see.
I get it, yeah.
You know, if there's an accident, if they're smart, they're gonna come after the city because, you know, that view was blocked. And I don't want to see anybody get any accidents there because of the backup.
Absolutely.
Okay, any, the covenants staff?
Dave still doesn't know what direction these guys.
Let's, let's go look at, go look at the neighborhood and the area.
Bring that in.
Bring it back two weeks.
I'll put this on the next agenda.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so I do not have comments, so I'll go ahead and request a motion and second to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Okay, Dave Connor with the motion, Reed with the second. Clerk Coloro, please. Connor.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Reed, aye. Adjourned.